All right, good morning, everybody. I'd like to call to order the March 7th, 2023 City Council meeting. Please call, roll.
Garza?
Here.
Conklin?
Here.
Goss?
Here.
Fast?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item, please.
We have the prayer by Pastor Darryl Peterson of Grace Christian Church.
Go ahead.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Let's go ahead and pray. Dear heavenly most gracious father, we come before you, and father, we lift up our city, we lift up our council members, we lift up all the department heads, and father, we pray for them for godly wisdom and understanding, and father, just that this city can run and flow, flow in harmony. And father, I think there are so many things that needs to be done, but father, we know it can only be bits and pieces. And father, we thank you for this council meeting today. We thank you, Lord God, for the leadership. We thank you, Lord God, for the wisdom. And father, we just thank you that even though it's hard to please everybody, that it'll just flow good, and things will happen that needs to be done. And we thank you for these things, these opportunities, in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 4A, a proclamation for theater in our schools month.
We have Karen Neal. Join me, please.
I'm going to have my president join me.
Absolutely, that would be fine. Let me see if I can get through this proclamation first, if you want to join me up here. And what's your name?
Vernon Kaiser.
Hi, nice to meet you. All right. Whereas arts education helps increase students' ability to manage behavior, make decisions, and cultivate a positive concept of the self; and whereas theater programs help develop leadership skills and build confidence in the participants; and whereas 95% of school administrators believe that the theater experiences improve students' overall academic skills; and whereas audience-based participation in the arts and personal participation in creating art are both linked to higher levels of civic engagement and social tolerance; and whereas theater in our schools month is a special opportunity for our community to engage in the ongoing process of theater education and to bring a heightened awareness of the importance of the arts in education; and whereas Reno County schools have drama theater arts teachers who work diligently to create classrooms that allow students to learn and thrive and who are involved in district, state, and international theater arts initiatives; and whereas the Educational Theater Association has designated March as theater in our schools month; and whereas theater programs are an integral part of our communities throughout this country, including the city of Hutchinson. Now, therefore, I, John Richardson, mayor of the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of March as theater in our schools month. And I'll present this to you, and thank you very much. Thank you. I don't think we have enough paper for another whereas on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item 4B, a proclamation for International Women's Day.
Thank you very much for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna, I think we have Dave Satello and Jane, I'm gonna, Holzrechter? Holzrichter? I'm sorry.
And I am presenting Rebecca Sandoval as one of our board members. She's current unpassable president.
All right. Please join me up here, please. All right. Whereas women play a vital role in worldwide social, economic, cultural, and political development; and whereas women continue to struggle against discrimination whether it is a barrier to education or advancement, a pay gap at work, higher premiums for health insurance, inadequate options for family leave, or physical or sexual abuse or violence; and whereas International Women's Day has been observed since the early 1900s, a time of great unrest and critical debate amongst women concerning oppression and inequality, spurring women to become more vocal and active in campaigning for change; and whereas March 8th is International Women's Day, a day to celebrate the collective power of women, past, present, and future; and whereas International Women's Day is a day to uphold women's achievements, recognize challenges, focus greater attention on women's rights and gender equity, encourage and mobilize all people to do their part to bring about positive change; and whereas the city of Hutchinson wishes to take this opportunity to celebrate the diversity of people in our city and to learn from the women of our community about their experiences and aspirations, and to use this day to commit ourselves to respect the rights of women to lead, secure, creative, healthy, and free lives. Now, therefore, I, John Richardson, mayor of the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, as International Women's Day in the city of Hutchinson, and urge all members of the community to make a difference and do your part to ensure that the future of women and girls is bright, equitable, safe, and rewarding. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Should we get a picture? I see you trying to get a picture here.
Please come on in.
Please, please. I'm sorry.
Yes, no worries.
I'll sit down.
Thank you so much. Yes, I just wanted to, on behalf of the Women's Ser optimism of Hutchinson, I'm Rebecca Sandoval, the vice president, actually, on the board. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to let you know that our organization is celebrating our 75th year here in the city of Hutchinson. And we do a lot of events to help support women and girls in this community. Couple of the events that I wanted to share with you, we have a reward called Live Their Dreams, and it is where we provide two women, head of household, a $1,500 scholarship to go back to college. And we open that application process, and we award those every year. We also have a Community Impact Award for two high school senior girls that have made an impact in the community, and we provide them $500 scholarship. And then also, to a nonprofit of their choice, we give an additional $250 to that organization that they choose. Some events that are coming up, we wanted to share that on April 22nd, at the Kansas State Fairground Meadowlark Building, we will be doing the women's show and the free health screens for the health fair. And that is free for all families. Prairie Star is partnering with us this year, and we'll have a mobile unit out there providing dental screenings as well as various other health screens for families. So that's an exciting event coming up on April 22nd. Also, in the fall, we have Lunafest, which is going to be at the Fox Theater. And that is an opportunity where we show movies that are screenplay's that are done by women, director, and producers. And so that's a great opportunity for the city to come and check out different screenings, different shows. So that is, again, October 13th. So I wanted to just kind of put out there the ticket vendors, Dawn's Floral, YMCA, The Alley, the Reno County Chamber of Commerce, and Kansas State Fair, if you want to get tickets for the women's show. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 5, oral communications from the audience.
This is the portion of our meeting that we allow oral communications with the audience. Please state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes.
My name is Sheri Bosley.
Please, please come up to the podium, if you don't mind.
My name is Sheri Bosley, and I live at 1130 East Avenue C in Hutchinson. And I'm here today, you know, we've been seeing nothing but train wrecks on television lately. And I live about a half a block from, I think it's the Union Pacific Train Track. And I have a concern about the dip that's developed on South Main Street, over there by Stevens, the old Stevens Building. And, you know, I don't know how trains operate or whatever, but I'm wondering if we're not developing a sinkhole there, or if it's just the way the train that has pushed that whole track, piece of track down, and if there was a derailment in that area, how it would affect my area. And I was just wondering if the city has done anything in regards to that dip on Main Street.
I was, I was out there yesterday ironically, and I would venture to guess that the reason why it looks like it's dipped is from the overlays done on Main Street over the years, and builds up the asphalt on both sides because we can't adjust the elevation of the tracks. So the actual asphalt builds up. But Jeff, do you, you want to speak on this real quick? It'd be nice to alleviate concerns a little bit, if there are some concerns on that.
So yes, actually, the last time that we did a treatment on Main Street, it was an ultra-thin bonded asphalt surface where you don't take down the surface at all. It's a newer treatment in Hutch. We haven't done it a whole lot as far as coming into tracks. So our transition mill wasn't as graceful as it typically is in an intersection. We really needed more of a transition. But by the time everything was done and all the work was completed, there was a little bit more of a bump there. But that is because the road, actually, we picked up the road five eighths of an inch on both sides of the track. And we didn't, the train tracks didn't settle. So it is, that was actually a result of the recent, or 2019 overlay.
It's been on my mind, too, because we've had some, some issues, small issues around here in the last few weeks, too. But I've had a couple of people reach out to me that are out in the county that have asked me questions in regards to train issues. And I've tried to point them toward Sheriff Department Emergency Services, that they have questions on that, as well as KNO Railroad, Union Pacific, whoever's running through our town. I'll look into that a little bit, and see if there's anything else we need to be concerned with in regards to maintenance.
Okay.
But it is something that's been brought up.
Okay. I do have another issue. This weekend, I called Animal Control out because there had been a pit bull across the street. And I have a couple little schnauzers, one that thinks he could beat up anybody. And this pit bull had been hanging out in our neighborhood for about three days. And so I finally decided to call Animal Control. So I went through the 911 operators and everything. Well, when the animal control officer came there, he, I think, I would think that if you're looking specifically for a dog, that you've had a call on. And nothing against pit bulls, but, you know, he had been there for three days. And I would think you would drive a little slow, and maybe take your time, and look a little bit for a dog running around, instead of driving and just turning the corner and, and not paying, I feel like paying any attention to the situation. And the dog had meanwhile taken off and went down to the dead end that's there on C Street. And I called the 911 people back, and I said, could you tell him that the dog went down this way? Well, he drove like he drove the first go-around, and turned around and came back and left. And here comes the dog right after he leaves, just trotting around. And it's just my concern for the care of the dog, that there wasn't just a little bit more effort. I doubt, I, you know, I don't do their job. I don't know how they do their job. But I just feel that a little bit more time and care could have been involved.
Is the, is the dog still around C Street?
No, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
Since Sunday, actually, so.
I think we have a number for Animal Control without going through the 911 system, but...
Well, I called it, but there was no answer. I've called it over that past three days and never have gotten an answer.
Okay. Well, those are a couple items we need to note and try to address that a little bit. But if you do, if it does come back up, please call again.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Would anyone else in the audience like to address the All right, moving on. Next item, please.
Item 6, consent agenda.
Are there any items to discuss on the consent agenda?
Possibly. I, I'm sorry to put either one of you two on the spot, but how is the board appointments going? I know we have two on here, kind of, two or three months into the year, and, and I thought we were going to do those all at once. Did I misunderstand? I mean, is it, are these just filling vacancies?
Yeah, like, Dave Satello, Human Relations Officer, like I explained, I think, when we passed the new ordinance back in December, there are going to be appointments, empty spots that are just not filled. We tried to do as many as we could at the end of the year. I think the airport still had some empty ones, and so those have been appointed over the last few months. There's an empty spot in my commission that I'm hoping to fill within the next, this month. And so that's just going to happen. There's just going to be empty spots every now and then. People resign, life happens. And so we'll appoint them, because our boards need to be filled. We'll appoint them as, as it happens. I think just over the next month or so, I will also do the demographic survey that is part of that, that new ordinance or policy that we had last year. And that will give us a picture of where we are as far as appointment and demographics. But yeah, I think that's just, will happen, continue to happen. We hope to fill all of them at the end of the year, but we've always had resignations and changes throughout boards and commissions.
Well, I want to make sure that, that what we did is making it easier for staff. That's my main.
Yeah, I, at least on my end, it's been easier. But still, I just think people are, will resign. And so it's a lot easier to look for one person to fill that position and to advertise that and make a marketing campaign at the end of the year. And then if some, something opens up, just one person reaching out for one person, that's a lot easier, too. But we'll continue to just check that process and listen to feedback from other staff members who are part of the board appointments.
Thanks, Dave. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or items to discuss on the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Please call, roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7A, consider bid results for Pleasant and Hoagland Bridge replacements.
Good morning. So today, we are here for the bridge, bid results for the three bridges that we just bid to be, well, two of them are being replaced. We have the Pleasant Street and Hoagland Street Bridges over the east side drain. Both of those are concrete boxes with corrugated metal pipes on both sides. And they are in terrible, or they're in very bad condition. Pleasant is actually our lowest rated bridge in the city, so it's a good thing to get replaced. The Second Avenue Bridge has an ADT, oops, has an ADT of less than 70 a day. And so we've opted, that one was opted to be closed just permanently at that time. So that one will just be removed and taken off our inventory, so we won't have to maintain it or pay for inspections on it moving forward. The, yeah. That's where the Second Avenue Bridge is. It's coming down right off Stark Street. It's, it's, it's a very minor maintenance type of street. So the project is, was in the city's 22 CIP budget with approved funding of 1.2 million. JEO completed the design for the project, and we bid it the other day. The staff is recommending that City Council approve the construction contract to Claver Construction in the amount of $1,046, $46,310.31. Do you have any questions?
How long ago was the Hoagland Bridge fixed? I was out there and noticed there was new concrete on there, and it wondered...
It's, I don't know when the last time it was fixed was. I mean, it's been fixed several times. The bottom has rusted out completely from the corrugated metal. So as traffic is driving over it, it's slowly settling. So they constantly have to pull it back up and do a patch and try to hold it together, and then patch on, patch the concrete street on top of it. So.
I just wonder, instead of repair, 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 if we could catch it and react to it quicker and just take care of it rather than spending quite a bit of money on concrete? It looks like there's a lot of concrete and curbing that was done there.
There is. There's also, there's also a lot of patches on Second Avenue and several that are getting ready to be needed on Pleasant. All of those corrugated metal pipes along the east side drain have, are failing. So this is actually kind of a program that we've been working on, to where we have basically a bridge every two years being put in. This one, we had one longer bridge that we're actually, is in design right now, a 16th and Baker, that was going to go first. But then, when Pleasant's bridge inspection came back so poor, we decided we could get all three of these done for the same price as that one much longer concrete box. So we swapped them around. The, so the plan moving forward is to continue to do one a year. The other problem that we're having with these is that they, KDOT changed their bridge rating structure. And so Trans Systems is now doing, I believe it's Trans Systems, is now doing the entire states. And so everybody's will be rated the same. These ones are all have less than two and a half foot of fill over them, which means that they are required to have a four-ton rating. So if people don't know that, that means no fire trucks, no ambulances, no trash trucks, no delivery trucks. Even though they're going to probably drive over them, they're not rated to because, and that is the entire east side drain, which separates the city from east to west. Like we just did the one on 11th Avenue because it was getting ready to be changed to a four-ton rate weight limit. We wanted to get out in front of that one.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion on this.
I motion to approve the bid from Claver Construction, the amount of $1,046,310, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
I second that.
We have a motion in a second. Please call, roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes, thank you. Next item, please.
Item 8, report to city officials.
All right. Ms. Goss, would you start us off?
Yeah. So I had an exciting meeting with a stakeholder in the, sorry, in the daycare situation in Reno County. And I think that there's hopefully some, not to overuse the term, but exciting things happening that will bring additional seats or spots of daycare, not only to Hutchinson, but a couple of the surrounding communities as well. I'm excited to, again with that word, sorry, I'm excited for the, the whole thing. But the solutions moving forward will really open up a lot of women getting back to work if they so choose. The other thing is, I would like to see some public education about how to contact non-emergency services or animal control. I think I've seen it a couple of times on Facebook or something like that, which is where so many people are getting their news these days. But I'm curious as well, and would love to see some more education on how people can go about contacting or what the process is. Maybe some links to where people can read about the code and what their rights are as well, especially during weekends and after hours. And lastly, the layoffs at Sunoco. There's some families that are really hurting. Sorry.
That's okay.
Families that are really hurting right now in Reno County. And I just hope that we can all lift them up in prayer and in our thoughts. And I encourage everybody to go to GreaterHutch.com and look at the resources that are there available to those who are laid off. And that's it. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Conklin?
None.
Mr. Fast?
I would echo Stacy's thoughts on the Sunoco thing. And I've never been in that situation. Hope I never am. If there's something that we can do as a council, please contact me directly, and we'll try to help. That's a huge, huge hit. I really don't think I have anything else that matters a whole lot.
All right. Mr. Garza?
Yes, I've been, been approached and called on the layoffs, too. And it's a bad deal. But Hutchinson has a lot of opportunities. There's a lot of jobs out there. So if there's anything we can do to help, I'm for all that. Also, the Zoom on the master plan, I was involved... Also, the Zoom on the master plan, I was involved in that with Mr., all three of these commissioners here that I know of, and it was a great thing going on for the master plan, had a lot of good comments, a lot of good, a lot of good on that, and I see that going far. It's going to be a good change for Hutchinson. Other than that, that's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you. I believe we had 116 people that were laid off of the Sunoco layoffs yesterday, the closing yesterday. I reached out to a friend of mine who works at Sunoco Corporate to see if there's any inkling on what the future plans are for that plant, and he's going to try to let me know once he finds out. Unfortunately, people also got their property tax valuations on their properties in the last couple of days, and that's kind of a double whammy. I would advise people to educate themselves on the process if they want to dispute their property valuations with the Reno County Appraiser's Office. I think you can go online and see how to do that if you think that your property is not valued correctly. And with that, I will, I will hand it to Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I'd like to start off by introducing a new employee. Mr. Kevin Irwin is our new communications director. He comes to us from Michigan. Kevin, if you want to, I'm sure they're going to want to see your face and maybe ask you a question. He's a week into the job, like a week yesterday.
Yeah. I come from the Ann Arbor area. I worked for a nonprofit, large ambulance private service up in Ann Arbor, and it was time to go. So it worked out well, and this job came available. This has been a great community, and I've been received very well, and I thank everybody. And big challenges, but you've got a beautiful center, you've got great people. So this is going to be a joy and a great pleasure to serve you all. So if you have questions, I think you know where my office is, so don't ever be afraid to reach out and ask me questions. I appreciate the introduction.
Welcome to Hutchinson.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Tropical Hutchinson from Ann Arbor, Michigan.
It's been very nice to meet you. Yes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to the Hutch High Boys, the basketball team. They punched their ticket to the state tournament, so their first round game is, I believe, this Thursday in Emporia. So congratulations to them. Reminder, we have a study session tonight to discuss 30th and Lucille. That'll be 5:00 PM right here. Is an open meeting, but I don't believe public comment is, is expected, but it is an open meeting. Also, remind you that we also, at our next meeting, we'll have a study session immediately following the March 21st council meeting to discuss water rights and the future of water here in Hutchinson. And then finally, I'd like to make everyone aware that our safe sidewalk program, it is open for applications currently. We are also extending that application deadline to April 15th. I believe currently it's stated from March 31st. We're going to extend that a couple of more weeks to tax day, so April 15th, be easy to remember. We will be working on getting some more public education about that program out to the community. We will also be looking about translating it into Spanish and helping people navigate our website a little bit, you know, not just Spanish, but other languages as well. So that's all I have, and I would stand for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Francis?
What time is the special meeting?
On the 21st? It'll be immediately following our regular council meeting, so in that morning.
Okay. Very good. All right.
Any other questions for Mr. Francis?
Okay. Before we go into executive session, I want to echo what Ms. Goss said. The resources, the Hutch Chamber, they're working very quickly to try to get some optional job opportunities up and posted and working with local employers. So I would advise if people are looking, and I know a lot of people on social media have been reaching out and letting people know where jobs are available, so let's just keep that activity going. And with that, next item, please.
Item 9A, executive sessions.
How much time do you think we're going to need? It's 9:30. All right. So we'll go into executive session until 10 o'clock?
Yeah.
All right. I would entertain a motion for that.
I'll make the motion to recess into executive session until 9:00 or until 10:00 AM.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin? Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. All right.[906.81]
You need for a couple of minutes, right?
(laughing) Wait for one person back and then you can, everybody can take care of business. And it's Thompson.
I think so, but I don't, I don't know.
No, he's right here.
Oh, oh, nope, there it is. I didn't see him come through.
How much, how much time do you think we'll need for the next?
Twenty, twenty ought to be.
Twenty minutes?
You know, we have enough people here to do a recess for ten minutes. Let's recess for ten minutes until ten-ten.
You need for a couple of minutes, right?
(laughing) Wait for one person back and then you can...
Yeah.
Everybody can take care of business. And it's Thompson.
I... I think so, but I don't... I don't know.
No, he's right here.
Oh, oh, nope, there it is. I didn't see him come through.
How much... how much time do you think we'll need for the next?
Twenty... twenty ought to be.
Twenty minutes?
Yeah.
You know, we have enough people here to do a recess for ten minutes.
Yeah.
Let's recess for ten minutes until ten-ten.
Ten-ten.
...